The city council meeting, special meeting for September 12th, two thousand twenty-two. I ask that you all rise with me for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under our umbrella.
Let's take them all. What's city clerk Sarah Beck, please call roll.
DeMorn.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Wagner.
Here.
Walker.
President.
Murphy.
Present, we have a quorum. We have this new businesses discussion on status on the two thousand twenty-one action plan and possible identification of future city goals. For that, I'm going to turn it over to city manager Shane Horn.
Carrying this. Okay, good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council members. I really appreciate the investment of your time this evening. I know this is not one of our regular meeting nights. Certainly also appreciate staff as well, and I'll just reiterate what I've said several times. I'm blessed to be able to work with such a great team of folks, staff-wise and elected leaders as well. So I appreciate the opportunity to sit in front of you this evening. The purpose of this evening's work session, and this is a work session, we are not, I'm not asking, and we will not be conducting any sort of vote, official vote on any item that we'll discuss tonight. This is mostly for, for us to get direction from, from our elected leaders, from council. We have in front of us an action plan that's been compiled and updated over the course of the last few years. Really, from a staff perspective, I really want to get, and I really want to make our time as staff as productive as possible. So the purpose of tonight and the purpose that I would like to see us going forward with potential scheduled work sessions is really to dive into maybe some bigger discussion items that we may not want to take up a lot of time during our regular meetings, but maybe we need more, more discussion about some topics that would really fit into that work session format a little bit more productively. And there, we'll talk about how this may be scheduled in the future with regular work sessions. But the purpose of tonight, for the most part, is to really evaluate the current action plan as presented. And there may be two or three options to consider as we go through this. One option could be steady-as-you-go type of thing, keep plugging away at some of these priorities. One, one option might be, we've, we've kind of addressed this to the, to the, to where everyone is satisfied, and maybe we cross it off. Maybe there's new topics that each of you have, that you're, that you're passionate about, that we need to add or consider to this list. And I think I've mentioned to you, to each of you before, I'd like to have some sort of a condensed list. I like to, and I'll just say five to eight bullet points or priorities or action items that, from a staff perspective, give us clear direction, clear marching order. So everything that we do, when we compile the budget, if I'm sitting in each of your seats, I'm asking staff, how does this line item in this budget direct, directly impact these five to eight priorities? And so as staff, we're asking ourselves these questions. I'm asking those questions from a capital improvement plan standpoint, from a regular line item standpoint. We should be really circling back to these priorities that we refine this evening and going forward, obviously, as well. But, so I certainly appreciate the value and of your time tonight. Again, trying to get some clear direction on how you would like us to, to spend our time and effort as we move forward over the next year or two, understanding that these things, some of these are fairly large projects that we're just not going to be able to get done in one budget cycle because there's a lot of complexity to them. There's some financial constraints that we have to evaluate. But again, this gives us some, some good, clear understanding of where each of you are coming from, give us that type of direction going forward. So we know and understand what the expectations are as you kind of go through that process with us. So that's the, that's the purpose of tonight. Certainly, I couldn't have drawn up a better evening. I'd hate to look outside and see a beautiful sunset, so we don't have to worry about that. But it has been a beautiful summer. I've certainly enjoyed every, every evening and going to the park and watching the sunset and pulling up a chair and reading a book and watching that happen. It's been a great summer, so I really valued that. So go ahead, Sarah, we'll start walking through this. So as presented in the two thousand twenty-one action plan, we have seven listed priorities. And I don't believe these, and you can all correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know what these are in any order of priority, but, and maybe they are. But goal one is ensuring a long-term sustainable budget. That's a really, I mean, that's a great priority. It needs to be something that's front and center to us each and every day, and we want to make sure that we're, we supply services at a very efficient and effective level, making sure that we're mindful of all of our taxpayer dollars and resources that come into us. Goal two, infrastructure, and we'll talk each, about each one of these in greater detail. Goal three, economic development. Goal four, and I have condensed these down a little bit. We've got a little bit more verbiage to these, but the summary is, is hopefully, I've not taken too many liberties with these. But goal four is really looking at our wonderful downtown and how, how we can continue to develop, develop opportunities downtown. Goal five is sustainability. We, the, the action plan itself, of all these items, probably sustainability has the most play, if you will, as far as the amount of action items involved with it. So I'm, I take it out of that as an, as an outsider, that this is very front and center for each of you because it looks like we've spent a lot of time with sustainability measures, at least in the action plan. Goal six is affordable workforce housing initiatives, promoting those initiatives. And then goal seven is exploring the development of a regional transportation authority. So these are the items that are in front of us. These are, and I don't, I've talked to staff several times about how this was compiled. You all know the history much more than I do. And so what we'll be doing this evening between Sarah and myself and other staff members, and I will say before I forget, we do have a couple other staff members that I've kind of given the night off. Both of them celebrate their birthday tonight. Al and Zach are both, today's their birthday, so I just said, you know, we'll, we'll fill you in on all the details tomorrow, but enjoy the evening. So that's why they're not here. So, so looking at the action plan of a long-term sustainable budget, so that the objectives that are listed there, maintaining high-quality amenities that residents and visitors enjoy, creating parks and trails and shoreline and city building maintenance plan, and then managing our unfunded accrued liabilities. And I've tried to capture kind of the latest update, and we have, as we've kind of walked through this, we really have been intentional about going after these, and hopefully, that's the take-home message this evening, that we have really gone after some of these priorities to a large degree. So based on the parks, capital needs, Kendall and his team went through a assessment, a capital needs assessment that was completed. I think he did have that or should have that, a pretty lengthy document that really looks at every individual park or recreational area, kind of forecasts out, you know, what the needs look like over the course of period of time, and gives a budgetary assessment for what that looks like. And so it's certainly a document that Kendall will use as he looks at compiling his annual CIP and what those needs look like. And that's going to be a valuable document for him as he manages his area going forward. And for each of you, as, as you answer questions from constituents, and, you know, what does Washington Park look like? You know, when are we going to do something there? You know, you can go back to the capital needs assessment and look at what that looks like, look at some future plans for that park and be able to answer questions effectively that way. And I'll just, this is very, very informal tonight, so even as staff, if you want to fill in any details, I certainly don't need to do all the talking. Kendall, anything you want to add on your capital needs assessment that you think might be valuable for the group?
Well, I think you're going to see it influencing the CIP.
Make sure you hit the.
Sorry. So I think you're going to see, you're going to see that influence in the CIP and in the, the upcoming Parks and Recreation Master Plan. So it was a, I thought a thorough document, and I think it paints a pretty clear picture of, of the next, you know, five to 10 years in terms of, I mean, it's a 30-year-old infrastructure for a lot of it, and this is, this is time.
Yep. Yeah, Kendall and I sat down with one of our regulars that, that comes, he winters in Arizona, but he comes up here during the summer and spends his, his summer in the camp in Magnus Park, and it just kind of went on and on how, how much, I think this is his 15th year of doing this. Really enjoys it. He, his message to us was, don't make too many improvements because we don't want everybody to start using this, and we don't want to get the word out that what a great facility this is, which it was neat to hear that feedback. But, so the other thing, I think that, and each of you can pat yourself on the back for this because I think, you know, Al with his leadership and the commitment that you all have shown to really start attacking from a pension standpoint, our unfunded accrued liabilities. We're in a, an enviable position, I believe, as, as my colleagues across the state continue to struggle with, you know, legacy expenses through, through pension, the pension benefit. Really, again, kudos to, to you as our elected leaders and to staff for making this a priority. Those additional allocations that directly went toward that has really made an impact. I don't know how low we ended up getting. I believe we were in the 70%, 70% area at one point, unfunded. We're currently up above 60s. We're currently at 91%, and I was talking to Al about it today, and he thinks in 2023 that actually will be closer to 94% funded. So again, kudos to you. This is certainly one item, and I was talking to Al about it. We can kind of cross off our list. I think we've accomplished our, our, our goal as it pertains to our pension. And so again, kudos to you, kudos to staff for really aggressively going after that. Any questions on, on the budget? Obviously, this will be something that you're going to be seeing here shortly, starting with the CIP. Next Monday, we'll be starting to roll that out over the next couple of meetings, and then obviously, operating budget will follow that for 2023. So anything, any elected officials want to add to this action item or, or chime in at this point?
Sure. Sorry. So Kendall, this is probably for you because this is on item one, but in the notes, which mine's different than what's up on the screen, it just says to maintain the highest standards for our local infrastructure and community amenities, an additional revenue source may need to be identified and pursued. Do you have thoughts about what that might be, or is that a premature question?
Well, we're, we work hard to get grants.
Yes.
And, and I, certainly, it's under the direction of the city manager and city council, but perhaps a, a millage of some sort or something more sustainable outside of just the general fund.
Yeah, if you see under expectations, I did list that, I always think there's value of looking at any and all revenue options as we look at maintaining our wonderful park opportunities. I did mention across the state, after the August election cycle, many of these initiatives across the state were fairly successful when it comes to dedicated funding. And I know grants will still, will always be something that we go after and pursue. The other side to that is we have to have obviously matching dollars when you, when you're submitting it for grants. And so I never want us to, to move so aggressively after a grant and then decide, oops, we really are not set up to be able to match that appropriately. So, and then there's, as we all know, there's a lot of red tape associated with grants. It would be, it would be lovely to get to a point where we don't have to wait for grants and wait for the process to play out. We have, we have resources in front of us that we can go after a project without having to necessarily rely on that. And saying that, we, grants will always be important and something that we'll always put our best foot forward on. But that might be something that we consider, you know, as, as we go into 2023, is there any appetite to look at maybe some focused dedicated funding?
My comment on that is grant to grant, year to year, doesn't seem sustainable. And so whether it's a millage or something else, green space is so important to us, so I think looking at that makes a lot of sense.
And, and grant dollars don't generally support maintenance.
Right. Kendall, is it conceivable of a possible five-year millage similar to a fire, fire, large fire truck pumper replacement? And you're looking at if we're going to do something, will it be sustainable if we do a five-year millage versus going and doing perpetual millage every year? Is it possible to, to catch up and to get where we want to be with a five-year, similar that we did, and add on?
I, I think that's, I think that's how a lot of these millages begin, is, is more of a, they have a shorter-term sunset on them. And then council makes a decision if they want to pursue, to re, renew it. And then, and then what, what, what I have seen from a best, from a, a practice is once they get past that first, that first trial period, let's say, then, then the term is, is increased to perhaps a tenure. But there are, you know, there are people that can advise the council, you know, to, to the degree, a lot better of a degree than what I could. Okay.
Are all of the millages that we have?
Are all the millages that we have on the roster, are they all expired? Do we have any other millages currently on, that were, were requesting tax knowledge from?
No.
For the ISD.
All of those, but not one.
Apparatus Millage. Okay.
Thank you.
Right away, millage is ongoing. So we have right-of-way funds coming in. We don't have to special assess for sidewalk improvements or street improvements. So that is a right-of-way millage that's ongoing.
Okay. And again, I just, another kudos to you. The community I grew up in, we did special assess for, like, all the curb work that we're doing on, on Lake Street and some of the spot repairs we did on State Street. As a property owner, if I lived on one of those streets, I would be special assessed based on the, the footage, upfrontage that I have. So again, I, I think this is a much cleaner and better way to go, in my opinion. So again, kudos to you on addressing that, so you're not putting that, you know, because that, that could be substantial cost, as we all know, which we did allow for payments over a period of time, and that was helpful for folks. But that was a, a cost that, as a homeowner, you're not really planning for when that comes through. So this, in my opinion, a good way to address that.
I happened in 1988 with actual a bolt on that millage because people were upset that the main street people living there were going to get assessed three times in the time that a small street like Myrtle gets at one time. And so it was felt it would be more equitable for everybody to pay a small amount of taxes to care for that millage. I think it's been a big success when you look at the sidewalks that we've got now, sidewalk plants.
Great.
Shannon, thanks for pulling us together. I think this is helpful. I keep prepared to cross some things off to help refine the goals. I appreciate that intention, and, you know, I supported furthering the discussion on supporting how we're going to pay for the infrastructure. I don't think that it needs to be a action item. I hope to continue discussion, but I would, I would not recommend that be an action item.
Okay.
It'll be an item that we can get some base on where we are, considering that he's done an assessment, could we get an idea of what would a millage look like? What would be the financial commitment that it would take to do that?
And that there's like voter will to make it happen as well, like the political will.
Right. And I think, like, like we've talked about internally, it's, it's always, in my opinion, best if it's a grassroots effort, similar to what the Winter Sports Park is undergoing currently, where it's a, it's, it's a bunch of folks that are passionate about that specific park that have really taken this project down and are driving it to the finish line, hopefully. And I know there's a lot of passionate people about, about our parks and getting those group, getting that group around the table to really help with messaging and seeing, seeing if there's a desire, obviously, doing some surveying or, or survey questions and things like that to see what folks really desire and how they want to see us grow and expand our park opportunities will be important.
I feel like I certainly respect the need, but I, I feel like I'd be remiss to not at least say the economic circumstances in which many people find themselves right now should be a consideration for us as well, understanding the great need at the same time, so.
Yep. I understand that. I wasn't suggesting that we go and put it on a millage in November or, or any time in the near future, but I think it would behoove us to at least find out, what is it, what kind of millage are we talking about? A five-year, is it one mill? Is it a half a mill, a quarter, two-thirds, five mills? I, I would like to know, what are we talking about for this improvement, just to have more information to, to deal with?
And I completely agree with that. Information's always good to support decision-making.
Okay. Anything else that, obviously, there's some pretty clear things that we can cross off this list, and we talked about those already. And we've talked about potential add, that, that we will update it with as far as, and obviously, we're, this is just discussion. We're just kind of throwing ideas around at this point. So we'll, we'll add that as a, as a objective, looking at options for dedicated revenue. Anything else before we move off this topic? Okay, Sarah, go ahead and move to the next one. Infrastructure, again, I think this is one that historically, we've done a great job with. I think, you know, Mike and his team have really identified where our needs are as we look at our underground stuff. And, you know, there's nothing that will bring economic development, which we'll talk about in a minute, to a screeching halt faster than not having infrastructure, adequate infrastructure, infrastructure that's planned for future growth and economic development. So those two things in my mind go hand in hand, where we have to have our underground utilities in place and at a very strong level. And again, kudos to Mike and his team and to each of you for making this a commitment. It's wonderful that the amount of resources that have been expended and approved to really go after undergrounding our utilities, making our community as, as beautiful as it can be, so everyone has a, a nice view as they look out. We don't have to look at, at polls and lines, even though we, I do get frustrated, I know Mike gets frustrated, that we need to have the same urgency with some of our, our partner utilities, you know, with, with telephone and cable. That is a ongoing, I look at a, a telephone pole in my front yard, even though I know my road's been undergrounded. But, so those are things that we're going to have to keep front and center with our, our partner utilities in and around the area that they have the same desire, and we have to kind of push them along to make sure that they're making those same things, same commitments as we've made with our utilities. So that's, that's an ongoing discussion that we have. Again, pursuing grant opportunities to support specific infrastructure needs that, that will remain ongoing. We have some, for a small community, we have some fairly large needs. You know, when we look at, and this kind of goes along with what we were talking about with parks, but we're, we're going to have to figure out the trail system, restoring that, what does that look like? I did kick off a, a steering committee, Kendall and I, and, and Brian's going to sit in on that for, for us as well. And then the trail council to try to figure out and get other partners around the table that have a like mind, that really want to see that trail put back. And what does this look like? It's, it's a lot of layers involved. There's environmental issues, there's M-dot issues, all sorts of things that, you know, when you, when you, when you pull back all the layers, it can get a little overwhelming, so I, I want as many smart people around me to help get, get input, get feedback and get, get all the players around the table that can bring ideas and resources to make this happen. So that's a big one that will remain right in front of. To make this happen. So that's a big one um that will remain uh right in front of us for a while. This is not something that. Unfortunately, we're going to get uh restored um quickly. It's going to be. It's going to be a process and we'll we'll start working through that as quickly and as expeditiously as we can, but. So as we look at infrastructure, the CIP really helps us address that and prioritize that. Uh, which is what you're going to be looking through and hopefully I've started that process of looking through the CIP. And then looking out, there was discussion about looking out additional ten years to provide, really look at what those longer term. Needs could be. And we've kind of done that in the back of the CIP, our longer term projects that we really haven't. We haven't identified any funding resources for them. But we know it's a, it's it's something that we need to kind of move through the system at some point. So that's been added to the back of the CIP, some longer term. Needs that are associated with capital projects that we still need to kind of walk through. What funding looks like for each of those. One of the things that came out of this last CIP review by planning commissioners, the planning commission was. Um, and this was a fairly long discussion. They felt like they were just a kind of a rubber stamp and didn't have enough in their mind. Input on the CIP, how it was compiled and and direction, my my comment back to them was, we have. We have a team of staff that. This is what they've been trained to do. They're certified, they have certifications, they have education, they have experience and putting these. And prioritizing projects. This is where the CIP needs to um needs to happen, it needs to be funneled through staff. One suggestion I had to them, which I would also extend to 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 you. Is having a, and we did this in the community I came from. Before we formally presented. The CIP, we had a combined work session with Planning Commission and City Council. Where staff could kind of walk through each of their uh projects. They could get all their questions answered at the same time, so everybody was hearing the same information. Um, so planning commission members would attend, council would attend, and you all would hear the same information. So I'd like to incorporate that. In the twenty three plan, obviously we're well beyond that this year, but. So going forward, I would like to see uh if if there's a desire for council to do that. A combined meeting where. Everybody sees it at the same time, we can walk through it, get questions answered. And then get get that feedback and either do any massaging to the plan. Or, you know, answer questions um at the same time. So. Planning commissions seem to like that concept and I'm hoping that council, you would all um enjoy that as well and. Um, and we did this on a, doesn't have to be this way, but we did like a Saturday morning work session. Where you kind of. Eight to noon or whatever, we'd bring in breakfast and we'd just kind of make a morning of it. Um, but again, it doesn't have to be necessarily that, but. Um, just throwing that out there as an option for something to consider. So we're, I'd like to plan on that for for the next budget cycle. Um, and then one of the things that I thought was a good idea on here, which I don't know. If we've started to do this, but certainly I would be supportive of doing this because I don't think. As staff, we do a great job of keeping track of our past awarded grants, but what a great opportunity for. Us to tell our story a little bit better if we do maintain and maybe we do um individually. Um, but maintaining that list so we can. Again, I think I think we all uh need to kind of pat ourselves on the back at times because. We get a lot of funds that flow through the city and that's that's not without a lot of effort of of staff. So being able to tell our story by saying, hey. Look at this list and see what projects we've been able to accomplish. I always think there's value of. Looking back and having a a a master list of of things that we've been able to to get from a from a grant standpoint is a great tool. And maybe you guys can tell me if this is already happening, we already have it, but uh again, I think it's a great idea. And something that we can certainly incorporate going forward.
With our audit, but it's an annual annual receiving.
Okay, okay. Perfect.
Shane, we get at least a version of it or for our city conventions in our summary. So it's one of my favorite bragging points.
Yes, yes, yep. Are there any staff input on infrastructure? I know uh Mike was talking to maybe Tina about um how we rate our roads and how we put our budgets together and. Obviously, we go through every. So three or four years, Mike? So we we drive all of our roads, there's a, there's a. A process, there's a standard operating procedure that is filed that is recognized nationally that we use to really go through and. Rate our roads, looking at all the spider cracking, I don't know all the technical terms for what's happening with a road. That's. Why Mike does a great job with what he does, but all the all the different things um. Uh, and and obviously it's something certainly we have to take um. Be mindful of, especially in this climate, uh water getting into um. You know, the road base is not a good scenario. It ends up, you know, obviously destroying a road pretty quickly. So we want to make sure that we're. Pretty aggressive about doing, you know, coating our cracks and getting in there and addressing um. Uh, road maintenance issues on a regular basis, so. Certainly something that's a priority for us and and we have a fairly aggressive schedule as far as how we go about that. As you all know, we've spent. A lot of uh money and effort on the two projects that we were going through this year. Uh, I'm very pleased to report. And hopefully that we can report out Monday that uh we'll be skateboarding down Lake Street uh here very soon, so. That's right. If we can get a couple more dry days, we're going to be in pretty good shape there, so. That's exciting. Any uh council comments on this line item or this action item? Okay. Economic development, so this is obviously a a key one. Um, and again, kudos to. I know that we went through this uh down in Adrian, the R C process and program is not an easy process to go through. Um, so again, this is, this is a pretty significant lift. Um, so again, kudos to staff and council for. Making this a priority and getting that uh uh certification. Uh, so we obviously want to make sure that we're reviewing and assessing. Properties annually, making sure that we're uh lining up for potential opportunities to take advantage of this certification. And maintaining that certification, you know, as we move forward. Um, you know, looking at redevelopment sites um and looking at potentially city owned properties, you know, that are consistent with our goals. Looking at those. The opportunity to reengage with N L E A, I had a, Zach and I had a very good meeting with um. Uh, Dave and his team on Friday, um really laid out um. A a a nice uh opportunity for us to reengage with them and and I would like to have. Further discussions with each of you on what that could look like for us. I know the county has. Reengaged with N L E A. I I do believe that that could be a good um. Partner that we continue because we are small. We're a group, we don't have um a dedicated person for this task. I think using the expertise that is there. Um, we met with all their team, they have people that are dedicated to grants, we could take advantage of that resource as well. Um, so that's that's something that I would like to have further discussion on as well. I think that makes. Makes sense to get uh get back in front of them. I, to me. Um, and I've always said this wherever I've gone and I want to promote first and foremost the city of Potaski, you know, I. Love this area, this is my employer, this is where I live, so I want. I want all opportunities to come here. But I also know that. If a factory happens in Charlevoix that brings in three hundred well-paying jobs, that's good for our region. And we should all celebrate that. Now, I do would want to know from a site selector standpoint, what? Where we fell in that, were there things that we can improve on? Um, from a city standpoint, um and it could be maybe we didn't have the inventory they needed or the. Amount of acreage they needed or what what were the issues? So we can kind of always try to put our best foot forward for the next one, but. I'm always one that if I see or read about um a county um uh economic development. Project happening. That gets me excited, you know, I I certainly want it here and I would certainly always. Support Potaski first for sure, but it's it's good that it at least stays within our county and I think we need to. Kind of support those things and encourage those things because we know the trickle down that happens. When three hundred new jobs come into town, you know, they're going to be coming to Potaski to do business and other things here as well, so that's very important. And then as uh council member Shields mentioned a couple of different times, putting forth an economic development incentive plan, I've talked to Dave about this. Specifically, I I know that we can get some good support and putting really a. A toolkit together, a a uh flow chart, if you will, for a potential site selector on. These are the the tools in our toolbox that we can help you walk through with, because I did come out of the. And I I handed each of you a hard copy of the downtown strategic plan. That did come out of that plan a little bit that there was some. Were a little disjointed as far as economic development goes and I can certainly feel that a little bit, so. Having having someone that can help us through that and has knowledge of all the different. Tools that we could use in our toolbox would be helpful for me and I think would be helpful for the city. We're losing um someone with an outstanding um history of putting projects together from an economic development standpoint. From an incentive standpoint with Al retiring. So I think we need to make sure that and and not that he's um. You know, leaving, I think we could certainly look at some consulting opportunities if if that ever. Would be uh something that council would want to do or Al would want to do, but. Um, having more people around us that talk economic development, in my mind, it will always be a good thing. Um, and so that's a, that's potentially an objective that we can have further discussions about. Um, so updates on that, we're we're obviously annually updating our R C commitments uh focusing on. Sites for redevelopment, uh we've we've gotten some good. Um, some really good uh activity going on with a couple of our big bigger sites, the Lofts at Lumber's uh.
Square.
Square, thank you. And then uh the Maple Block uh building um. I try not to get too excited when we sit down with developers because these things have a tendency to. Kind of fall apart, so I don't want to get my heart broken time and time again, so I I I. I I I listen and I uh and I say, you know, we'll we'll always put our best foot forward and help whenever we can and we do have some tools that we can help you with. Uh, but there's been some good activity at both of those sites and we'll we'll kind of see how things go. It's, those are. Uh, especially the Maple Block site, that'll be a. Um, that's a concerning sight because it's just uh as I drive by it, you know, most every day, it's it's. It's polite and there's no other way to 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 say it. It's it's a concerning area, it's not an attractive area. And we need to get it cleaned up. Um, and I that that would be. Addition by subtraction in my mind, we're just getting it uh getting it uh demolished and the site even greened up would be a. A win in my mind and then obviously redevelopment after that, but. So we have, we have some work to do there uh that will remain um. But those are two big projects that will be front and center. Um, let's see, what else on this list? Did you have a question?
I do, thanks. Um, so are we, have we resumed paying dues to the N L E A?
That's, that's a question that I have for this body. Um, as we put the budget together for F Y twenty three. Um, Al and I have slotted some funds in there, but.
I think annually it used to be like five thousand dollars a year and the county would pay eighty thousand. But I think the municipalities based on our tax base or our size were were like prorated or I don't know how that necessarily works. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Yeah. I think um in in talking with Dave um. It's been five thousand for a number of years. He asked if we would even uh uh. Consider anything a little bit more than that, but I think he would. He would be thrilled with whatever commitment we've done in the past as well, but um. In the big, big scope of things, I I know that we could get that value back. Pretty easily. It's a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to to show deliverables because this, similar to the. Housing North partnership, it's just, these things take time and um. Development, economic development is a process and you hold, do a lot of handholding and. You might not even make that second date. Um, it's just one of those things where, you know, we're we're trying to get to that point, but. Um, things have a tendency to fall apart at times for various reasons and. Um, but having, having again, that partnership, I think will, in my mind, be important, be important for me as as staff. To have that partnership that I can call on the phone and say. You know, I'm, we're we're having some calls on this site, can you help me put um a package together or? Put, you know, put our minds together on how this might look, especially again with with Al cycling out, cycling out with retirement. Um. He has a lot of institutional knowledge on that that he's kind of taking with him, so. Having someone else in our corner that can really help promote and put our best foot forward, I think is going to be important.
Are you looking at possibly doubling it?
I was thinking something in between, but I think for now we have five thousand. Um, when I talked to Al today, um, he's put five thousand in the budget. Um, just to match what we've done in the past. So if that's the the level that you are comfortable with, then we'll continue forward.
There's a couple of thoughts on value, that when the county pulled up. Um, our chamber, it was one of the carmen was still there, looked at possibly taking over economic development for us. And they came up with a budget of something like a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to do economic development right for plastic. So uh thankfully we didn't have to go there and I think we get a great deal from N L E A. And the other thing, Mayor, I know you and I. I remember Lindsay, further away from the the annual meeting event L A. Over at uh Boyne Islands, um. It was impressive what they had to present and I I feel like if nothing else, they're kind of our economic development market research arm. For not a lot of money, you know, and they're they're looking at things like more tech jobs, people can work out of their homes. Um, or the other couple, um. The craft beverage industry is growing in Northern Michigan, Forex, what it is in the rest of the. The country, the blue water economy, and they were, we're all part of those thing, and if we can learn from that and latch on to those and just, you know, not. Rather than shooting in the dark with where we want to grow. And I think that's a great uh, like great capability for it.
I would, um, I've been thinking that there's, to me, clear interplay between goal three and goal six. Economic base and affordable housing and I know. You've brought brought up before about an economic development policy and I I think again. A policy that addresses economic development and affordable housing incentives are kind of intertwined. So I don't know if there's a way that. They can or should be merged, but it's just a thought and I think that developing that policy should be something that. Really is very important. So we have clear guidelines that people understand, you know, if they want to come in and and develop. Here's what's available, that sort of thing. So there's clarity. I think that clarity could enhance interest.
Yeah.
Just some thoughts.
Yeah, I think that's a great point because if if folks are coming to us asking for certain incentives and they. They do not complement or support. Some of our other initiatives like affordable housing, if we're not going to. I don't want to say we because I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but I wouldn't think that the city would be. Um, bringing incentives to a table, to the table for uh uh development. Where there's, you know, eight hundred thousand to a million dollar homes being built. Um, especially when we're looking at affordability and and workforce type housing, it doesn't really, it doesn't really. Check the box there. So I I think that's certainly something that, you know, what percent of homes will. Will reach a certain percentage of A M I and and those type of questions that we'll always want to ask. Developers so we can start addressing some of these uh critical housing needs that we have.
I I have an interest in, I've raised this up before, considering a part-time economic development professional, you you know. Talked with code enforcement and having the two positions. That said, uh, you know, if there's not the appetite for that, I think starting with um. Uh, N L E A, uh to serve. Uh NLEA uh to serve that role, I I don't see them serving the role as someone calling the city and hey, can I talk to an economic development person, gonna pass it off to NLEA. But um you know, starting with them is a is a start.
Yeah, I certainly think that's something that we could grow into um. From an economic development standpoint, having having that resource in-house um. Because it it was something that came out of that plan, as I mentioned before, and I've had had other communities where they have. And these are typically bigger communities where a staff member is assigned to. This developer and holds that developer's hand through the entire process from start to finish, so. There's there's a smooth flow um from a development standpoint. It's a little difficult um in our situation because we just don't have. You know, the layers of staff to be able to to do that, and so. Each of us are kind of talking economic development, and I know each of you as our elected leaders are talking economic development with folks that you run into as well. And so we got a lot of us are are out there talking of Petoskey and and giving our. Our our thirty second elevator speech whenever we can, um and that's great, and I think that's important, but. Next steps, we need to make sure that we have. Things in place where we can again walk people through the. The rest of the process as as well as we can without anybody falling through the cracks because we don't want to, we don't want that feedback to come. Around that, well, I I started to do something or wanted to do something in Petoskey, but. No one would get back with me or or no one responded to my request for additional information, so that's certainly not not something we want to see. Um so I I think I think that makes some sense from a staff standpoint, working through. Um further relationships with NLEA, seeing how that evolves and then, you know, potentially continuing to evaluate. Are we at a point where we could add that part-time dedicated person, you know, in in in-house?
I understand the challenges with funding in-house, but I do have concerns when we outsource these assignments. Um and those concerns lie in the realm of conflict of interest. When organizations we outsource to. Be they fine organizations are representing a variety of different entities, I think it becomes difficult when opportunities present. And so when someone's in-house, they have a sole focus just for us. So I would just put that as a consideration, not in particular to any LA, but any outsourcing of um. These opportunities.
Quick comment on the economic development, affordable housing um. I think just sometimes awareness on the housing front for what's going on, so Habitat Habitat for Humanity is doing such amazing things um. Providing incentive for people, helping them get into a home and all that. The other organization of the Montai family, Montai Development, they're they're waiting for some county clearances, but they've got a development called Pine Pond. That'll go off the Pickle, Pickle Lake Road, not too far off the highway. And they're talking about things. They don't have them in place, but one of those is to go to local employers. And encourage them to help with down payments and help defend the health with fine homes. And I, so I think being aware of those things, they mentioned McLaren, they mentioned Stafford's, they mentioned, you know, some of our bigger employers around here. And it doesn't necessarily have to be in the city of Petoskey, but you know, I think we can learn from it and also know where outside of that point.
Yep, yep, that's great. I have a couple of comments. That's helpful now. Um so the RRC program has the uh best practices. I think there's six best practices. The site selection is I think just one of those. Um so one potential. Strategy or uh expectation be to go through some of those. Uh best practices, number two zoning, number three is development review. And number five is economic development marketing. So those best practices, they have actions there. I. I have questions about how we've looked, how far we've looked into some of those best practice action steps. And I was looking at the. Now, this this goal diversifying street from economic base, I actually combined them in my. Draft here with the next one, I addressed downtown development issues, if you try to. Put the the story uh the spin of our economic development, it's not development as not just downtown focused, but it includes the downtown and all that, so. Um uh in this economic or in this goal, I added. The take a systematic approach to address downtown commercial retail vacancies as a strategy. That's something that we've discussed as a a work plan idea. Um but in an attempt to kind of consolidate our action goals, I thought about combining those two, and that could also then include. Um the consider several specific strategies to increase covered parking downtown and the economic consent of policy. That that relates to housing as well, but that's kind of a cross of the board uh goal I think we should look at.
Um I did have a question in terms of uh under objective redevelopment sites should focus on city-owned properties, so there's only one that's part of the. RRC, and so that would be the Darling Lot. Um is there any discussion about any other city-owned properties that could? Could be used for any other kind of economic development?
Um.
Because I just go to parks, I think about, like the amount of land that we own is really park-based.
Yeah, we do have a couple of one-off parcels that we are looking at. I know Kendall's gonna help me. Put together a uh a plan to um. The Ingalls property that we own, I I went out there with Kendall and. Um and Joe and Zach and a few others. Actually, we met out with the with Habitat for Humanity. Um the the structure there on Ingalls is is be really beyond repair. There's a huge hole in the roof that um. Is concerning. I'm not sure what's holding that structure up anymore, but so we're putting a um a bid package together to to demolish it. However, Habitat is very interested in the parcel uh to put a couple of units there um. So they're they're going to be um working on their side of it. Um we'll obviously look to. Hopefully get it down before before winter. Um it's it's in pretty bad shape. And uh those are the discussions that and there's a property on um. Clarion, am I saying that right? Um.
There's two parcels on Clarion.
One near our Public Works uh facility um. A gentleman is interested in in purchasing that who lives, I think, nearby, so we're looking to go out again. I think we've already sent these out once. And I'm not sure what happened or didn't happen, but. I'm certainly not a fan of holding on to city-owned properties that really don't bring us any value um from a long-term standpoint, so. If we can get these turned around, get back on the tax rolls and. See some housing initiatives associated with them, I think that's again a win-win scenario, so. If you think of other city properties that we need to be considering and looking at.
I don't, I don't, I don't know what they are. I mean, I know that we were provided a list of city-owned properties and some of them were like. Off of Howard where the utility lines run between Howard and like Ann Street, which really isn't. Developable, developable, excuse me. Um and then those street properties that we actually went on to bid on, the only one that came to fruition. Was the purchase of the Washington Street property where that house was moved. And that was only like a community portion. The other two, like the water table's really high.
Well.
Yeah.
Individual who's.
Oh, I know.
Waiting to get that. I I think that's a great. Go at it, put it back up. If he wants to make a go of that. Platform or whatever he has to do, I say, let's move on.
Yeah, there's gonna be an RFQ.
Yeah, we we couldn't even get five thousand dollars for it before, so if we could get five thousand now. It's a win. You know, you gotta remember too, the public, all these public parks. Cannot be anything done with them without a public vote. So I don't think it's feasible to start saying we're gonna turn. Curtis Lockwood or any of them into housing, that's that's not, and I don't think that's a benefit to the city either, I think. I think our parks centers that we have in the neighborhoods are very, very important. I I think they need to continue to be supported, uh restrooms in them, parking sidewalk. Amenities.
Yeah, there is one other parcel that um we did tag with the DPW improvements, and it's the Southwest Corner. Clarion and Sheridan. And there's a little tin building. Hole barn that sits there today. There used to be a house there that the city acquired the property. But our thoughts right now is that is housed of that building houses conduit systems for the electric. So if we could develop the DPW and get everything under or on that side of the north side of Sheridan, it would free up that corner as a potential site.
I think it's deep enough for a decent house to get back off the roadway too.
I believe there used to be a house there.
The house was back. Off the road, so it's like traffic would be bad for Sheridan.
Okay, you keep moving. So that moves us into downtown development. Um again, looking at any and all improved opportunities to maximize downtown. Uh parking, including covered parking options was an objective. Um. Looking at expanding the use of upper floors um for downtown residential uses. Um looking into expanding the participation rate, this is voluntary program as we look at fire codes, self-inspections, as we all know. A lot of these downtown buildings share common walls and. Um making sure from a fire code standpoint that that uh buildings are in are in good repair and. Maintained and and so we don't have uh any sort of disaster downtown that we would obviously not want to see, so trying to. Um. Promote this opportunity to to do these self-inspection programs, I think is is another strong objective here. And then just exploring our our downtown vacancies, um what options do we have to um to address those um? Uh whether that's, again, we use the the carrot or the stick analogy um. Uh you know, wh- what what avenue would you like us to pursue and or maybe it's a combination of the two, but. Um I know this is a this is a big concern for for many of us as we walk around downtown and. And you see um the the amount of investment that's been made by really three property owners and. Um one of them really not um. Uh not committing to any sort of uh reinvestment or um. Opportunities to to sell or to sell at least at a reasonable uh return. Um so that's an ongoing discussion as I've said in on. On DMV meetings and I've read through the strategic plan and and I've walked through that with the consultant. Um this remains a a a big concern as as I've told. Um to Becky and her board, you know, this is really in my mind why why I came here, it starts with downtown in my opinion. And and I obviously it it moves on from there, but uh we need to make sure that our downtown remains. Um. Remains that economic driver that it is and and it brings people to our community to. Spend their dollars, to stay down here and to enjoy all the wonderful amenities that we have. I think it really starts. Uh starts with our downtown, so. Looking at that, um you know, we've we've talked about parking downtown for a number of, even since I've only been here three months, I've heard a lot of discussions about. Parking even even outside of um. Um this building, as I've met with folks in and around the community, parking is one of those things that come up all the time, and I've I've heard both. To be fair, I've heard both sides of the argument. Some say this is a. A seasonal three-month issue and. You know, and and then we we do we really need to have some sort of a structure and the other side is, well. We need covered parking and no one wants to come downtown when, you know, it's snowing and you have to brush your car off constantly and. Um people want that convenience of having covered parking, so from staff standpoint, you know, really trying to get. Really trying to drill down to what the desires of council. Is, so we know where we can go. Becky and I and uh Zach had a. Meeting a couple of months back with a developer who had a mixed-use concept for that site. And he had a list of questions that I thought were. Pretty good questions to ask because if I'm a developer, I'm not gonna want to spend a lot of resources on a. On a project that is potentially dead on arrival, so getting some of those questions answered. Ahead of time, so he knows and as staff, we know. What direction that uh you all would like to go, where to go and how do we how do we ultimately get there? Um so I sent those questions out. I don't know if you've had a chance to review them at any length, but. At some point, I really think we need to have the discussion and maybe this is um. This is such a big topic that maybe that's a separate discussion, a separate work session where we focus solely on that, which could certainly happen. But because we've heard about parking for so long, I'm saying long, it's only been three months for me, but you all have heard about it. Um where where do we go from here? Um what is the desire of council? Uh for us as staff to be able to facilitate your priority most effectively?
Shane, I have a couple of thoughts on. I've heard it obviously for a lot of years, we need parking, but is there a study that's ever been done? I mean, is there technology heat mapping, something that could? Show that I was with a dozen of my neighbors the other day, some of them totally sit, some are seasonal, some back and forth, some of them full-time. And to a person, they say, we don't need parking. People figure out how the heck to get downtown. We block off our streets downtown and we don't need parking. And I know the downtown management studies said we better move it on the parking. But it it seems like, you know, some kind of a study that said this, these are their actual number of spots, these are the options. You know, we've studied it and that's, I mean, I look out my front door and Fourth of July, there's still spots open off and on. That's a pretty busy. Busy spot and then could there be a kind of a more holistic look? I read your questions on the Darling Lot, one of my thoughts was um. Last time, two times, I guess we looked at plans. Uh they netted less spots for that location, but could that location bring in more revenue that could build the ramp ultimately somewhere else that could? Overall provide more parking. I yeah, and I don't know the answer, but it. I thought if we look at it strictly as that one project, that we put two layers on it, and the people who live there, the people who work there, take up those spots. And that that one spot loses, or one site loses, but could the city win if we thought about it more holistically? Problem is that that area is such a central area. Where if people are parking there, it leads them to walk downtown, crossing Mitchell Street, which I I think is important to. Continue to get traffic flow on, not just Lake Street, but I think the more foot traffic we get on Mitchell. The better for all of the downtown um. I I was, I've been at MML meetings and I hear from people, what was the, what is the the biggest drawback to coming here? And they go cost and driving here for motels. And I said, well, that's all over the place. I said, what about parking? And they go, you don't have a parking problem. And we drive through town, look for where we want to stop with us or with us or with our kids. And we drive into your neighborhood and we park in front of a house. And you've got sidewalks, you've got light, it's safe. We just walk downtown and it's great. And they said, it's nothing like dodging cars in a mall parking lot downstate, so they would say you don't have a parking problem here. But I see us having a covered parking problem. If we want people to live downtown. In these apartments above the downtown, I think a covered parking is what would would behoove us to to look at because. Nobody wants to come out after getting out of their apartment, coming out and having to shovel. Snow off, they'd rather just get in the car and go, and I think it would promote more downtown. Apartment living in Petoskey, but I think Becky, you could report on the Walker.
Well, so. In two thousand four, there was a Walker study done, how long ago was that? And it didn't have, I don't think heat mapping was invented at the time, so I don't know what kind of, but it did definitely show that we had a parking shortage and I don't have those numbers on the tip of my tongue, but it was. Especially in the quadrant of downtown um behind like the Seville Lot. In that particular quadrant where we were short so many, and that was even before there was this big push for residential development in the downtown. So that study's been updated over the years and those. So that study's been updated over the years and those numbers have remained sta- the same. We did just get a Walker study back that was, if that's the one you're referring to, John. Um that talked about the darling lot and putting a one platform over the darling lot and gave us numbers. And um for how much it would cost and also for how many that new spaces we could get. And it's terribly expensive and it gets more and more expensive every single year. What the consultant told us in the strategic plan she just did is that this is what we've been saying all along, that we would do with our money. So we kind of, to have credibility, we probably should make some, this is her opinion from coming from the outside. Make some progress and take a step forward along that path. Um and besides that, I know that when we first looked at a a platform like that. To collaborate with um the county at the Park Garden Lot and to put their two together, that was. I'm going to say twenty fourteen was when that concept first arose. But um it was four million dollars. It would have been two million for the city and two million for the county. And when we looked at it a couple of years ago, it had essentially doubled and now it's even more than that. So we're not keeping up, making the money to fund the project fast enough. To do it. It's going to take something else besides the parking fund to do this if we decide we want to do it. As far as shortage, do we have a parking shortage? It depends on what angry merchant you talk to, um what hot summer day, when they're standing outside their door and they see circle the block, circle the block, circle the block. The same car, can't find a spot. When we have um people who work in downtown who can't find a place to park that's close enough in their minds for them to work. Or even who are now up in years and having, they don't want to walk all that way or can't walk all that way. And they're having to struggle with hills. And we say it's a very walkable community, but it's not walkable for everyone. And if you're, if you've been on your feet all day and working in a storefront. And you're walking three blocks uphill in a blizzard at the end of the day, it's not pleasant. But it is part of working in downtown, so we have to know that that's what we're up against. But so need, wants and needs, how do you decide what you really want and need? But I've been here eighteen years and it's been told to me that it was a need since before I was hired, so.
It's three years ago, I think it was, we uh city council, you approached city council and stated that you needed more. If you increase the parking meter rates, which was had more people in this building. Than any other meeting in ten years. Uh people were complaining not to raise them, that it was going to kill the downtown, or it didn't kill the downtown. But that funding council was really adamant about was that it would go towards a parking ramp. Or develop of a pub- a larger parking structure. And that was the only reason, I think, we were able to get the that passed through city council.
Any surplus of funds that has ever been in the parking fund has always been understood that it's being saved to create more parking.
Right.
Always, from the beginning.
I'm just letting them know that that we are putting money away on a yearly basis. It may not be a, you know, a hundred thousand, hundred and fif- whatever, but it it it's going to take a long time. But I think we could leverage money by taking what we do have. And bounding.
If I could just add to. This is parking. When we did increase those rates, the very following year, we did have a pandemic. So that threw everything into turmoil. Then we had another year of the pandemic. And this year, maybe our first kind of regular year at collecting those increased rates. To see what kind of revenue they'll generate in the long run.
Um I think that any kind of um parking structure is going to be solely the cost. We bear that cost. There's going to be no incentive for economic development or subsidies for a parking structure. So the only way to leverage public and private money, both state and federal money. Is when you do a mixed use development that incorporates something else, be it an economic development like retail or housing. So I see like a parking structure as being a very carbon intensive structure. Cement is very carbon intensive. It's very expensive and we're building a parking structure for a fossil, for a fossil, for fossil fuels. It's basically what that, that's what we're doing. And and I I know that in terms of our sustainability goals, those things do not align with one another. And in terms of our economic goals, it's going to be very expensive. And so I'm, I I tend to look at those development plans, the Walker um. Uh development plans and the others that we had had when Rob Bocciulpi was here and talked about potential like retail, commercial. And parking, I mean, we had a variety of different scenarios presented to us. And those always seem to be more of more interest to me. And I I would assume our residents is to see a mixed use development as opposed to parking. Which is just about driving and parking fossil fuel vehicles. That's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, my comments, sorry, Brian.
Go ahead there.
Thank you, Brian. Uh my comments are similar. I was wanting, if that wasn't clear in the past, that I am definitely supportive of. Well, since the giant darling lot in particular is only, as we discussed earlier, the city owned R R C property. And um you know, a mixed use pro- uh project there is is um I think the prudent move. To increase the tax base and utilize that prime, prime space. And uh uh Lindsay said to utilize private uh partnership dollars. Uh to get something that meets some needs in addition to covered parking. I agree, covered parking is is an important value. I do not think we should prioritize uh cars over walkability. And that said, you know, we, you know, cars are, we're still dependent on cars. So I understand that uh you know, giving some covered parking support our downtown residents is important. And that's where I stand on this issue.
One other comment, just so we don't lose it, uh back when we got approved. Uh three different projects a couple of years ago for various things. The one at Bay and Howard, I don't remember what it was called, but we saw various versions of. That included double decker parking, park up on the third level. Kind of notwithstanding, there was a public-private partnership, basically, that and that lot still, is that the Seville lot? Yeah, the Seville lot. Yeah, to me, it's almost like if we could resurface that, look for the right developer to turn it into something. That that was a heck of a plan and it seemed to have a lot of support and we had approved at least the application of the brownfield.
I I agree. I think that was an excellent, excellent plan. Uh I was so hoping that it would go through.
Me too.
I saw it as a an opportunity, not just, it also had a public use purpose. With the roof being a place for uh uh lunches, uh stopping for area. I think it was a real plus to the city and I would hope that that would be pushed versus even the darling lot. Um I think that project was very good. I'd heard from two, one of the developers that they that they're still looking for somebody to actually fund it. Because they felt it was that good of a project.
From a philosophical perspective, I understand what Lindsay and Derek are saying. But if you're talking about economic development, the reality is people have to drive cars to get here. That's just a reality for now. I mean, I'm with you. I hope that changes in their electric cars so that we have other modes and means. Um second of all, speaking to the development at the darling lot, four stories. I also think an important consideration is the nature of the community and people that already lived there. And what does that mean for them in terms of, you know, how does four stories look? How does that impact their neighborhood? I think those will be important things to consider.
The other piece of it is is the electric cars. Electric operated cars, but they're still going to need parking. This is because they're, you know, their carbon footprint may be less.
Right.
But it's still going to be here.
Right.
And I uh, I think we have to look at it as how do we address the cars? Not the electric car, the gas car, but how do we uh develop to handle the parking for the cars?
Or how do we bring people to downtown and what are all the means of that happening?
But I think if you do a big development at the darling lot, you need to provide enough parking. Again, for the city, if that's what they want. Downtown, the downtown D M B wants more parking because they feel that would enhance more business. If we do that and we do also the development up above. You, how much more parking are we going to need to facilitate those added apartments or commercial or offices? They, we have to take into consideration probably at least one or two more parking levels. Because when you take a parking lot of a hundred, in the way it is right now. You can go in from the bottom of Potaski Street or in from the Michigan Street around and you do not need to do ramping. You can get two levels of parking without ramping, which basically will double your parking. If you go and have ramps in that first level and you start having because of the need for the the size of the building, et cetera. You're only going to pick up, what, forty eight sites?
That was Michigan.
You go, you'll go from a hundred, you add a whole level, but because you've got parking and stairs and and et cetera. You're only picking up forty eight spaces.
But it's also solely on us. Like that would, it would be just us financing everything. Cause nobody's going to subsidize or contribute or be part of a development that's a parking structure.
Well, I I think this goes back to Councilman Leonard's point. Uh I, this is anecdotal. I mean, I've I've been trying to more often drive by the dying lot in the busy times. And I still count parking spaces open. So I, I know, Mayor knows I respectfully disagree and 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 the need on the need to um increase parking. I think uh, you know, if we come out even and you cover parking space, I increase the tax base, utilize that prime location. I I see that as a um, you know, triple win there. So I think the key question that we had from a developer's standpoint was on the housing piece. Would would planning commission, would council entertain first floor housing? Uh for that project. And I think that's a key question that um may need further vetting.
Can always go for a variance.
Yeah.
So any board of appeals doesn't meet all the time. You have plenty of capacity. Sir.
I think, you know, we've visited that in the past, Becky will attest to that. And it is felt that once you start allowing housing on the first floor. You're going to have buildings downtown torn out or taken over for simply housing. You're going to end up with a a housing, a a a a shop, a housing shop. And I think that is going to be detrimental to our downtown as it is.
Unless you do a P U D though.
I mean, if it's on a transitionary part of downtown and it's only there. When we talked about it before, it was going to the highway at two hundred East Lake Street. That could have been a transitional, no, there's no more of downtown after that. There's the road and then there's the water. So that could have been a place. If this was on the backside of the darling lot on the Michigan Street side, that's the end of the commercial district. So that might be okay to put it there. When it comes right down to it. A parking deck, just a parking deck, is not the highest and best use of any piece of property. But we did, I'm, I was at the table with you when you helped us get it through. That we were going to raise our rates because that's what we said we wanted to do at that point. We planned for it. That was our goal. It was the board's goal. That's the reason that we did, we raised the rates to be competitive and there were other reasons, but that was what we said we were going to do with the money. So if we're not going to do that with the money, that's a, that's a switch in the road and a problem. I'm going to also say it on behalf of my board. I think it's responsible for a board to revisit decisions every once in a while and make sure that they're still wise. If this was a decision that was made twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six, thirty years ago, then maybe it does need to be revis- be revisited at some time. I'm sorry that I didn't back you a hundred percent there.
I I just feel it's it's important to keep the core downtown.
I do too. I would not argue that at all.
You're not talking housing on Lake Street.
It never was, never was, no.
Okay.
There is, there is a plan.
That's what I'm talking about is the core downtown. I think it's so important because otherwise, once somebody buys a building and puts housing in there. It's going to hurt the buil- businesses next door, next door. People are going to look and go, oh, it's housing.
Nope.
And I think we're going to hurt the downtown by by allowing that.
Never.
On the fringe, I don't have a problem with the fringe, but what, I guess we didn't clarify where we're talking. First floor parking. I'm sorry, first floor residential, sorry.
Michigan.
South. West.
So that that was a key question that he had. Obviously, the key question is height. Um so those are, those are big questions from a developer's standpoint that before things. Continue to move forward, that he wanted some feedback on. Again, that. So it's an evolving question, it's a big question and I don't expect, you know, solidify the insert this evening. But uh it's something that we we need to kind of. Continue to talk about, cause I don't, I don't want necessarily, um we have somebody that's interested. I want to make sure that we're responsive, responsible back to this person. Before they make any further decisions or next steps, if you will.
The Tina's point, height needs to be studied and understood for implications to neighbors and and for overall that area. That's, I don't know what four floors would would look like there. I hadn't really thought about it. But uh that would be the height thing and that that first floor housing in transition areas, I. I would be all for looking at that. I mean, I think, I think about some of the housing, I always forget where it is. You go down Howard, just across Bay, and that next street has beautiful first floor, you know, brick housing. And you know, if that were on in the periphery areas downtown without interfering with shopping. I I don't think it would be a whole lot different.
Yeah, I think that I agree with the, with the height discussion, like how how do we, how do we have that discussion? I I I'm generally supportive of being able to do the next incremental step in development. And if a fourth floor is that, like, I want to seriously be able to look into that, evaluate it. I think that maybe our city planner has G S capability. If we could have a really detailed topographic map layer, we could get a kind of sky sightline. Map, I don't know, whether it be three D or not, we could have have a picture of what is the impact. I think that'd be a great discussion point for us to have.
I I think this developer does have all that and would do all that, but like Shane was saying, that's very expensive. And if he feels like the penner here is, no, there is no point.
I'm not.
And spending it.
Not that vibe or not picking up that feeling um at this point. So my response back to him will be, let's, let's try to continue to to move forward. And um now, obviously, he needs to make sure it's comfortable for his um.
His company and organization, but uh. Okay. Good. Um obviously, Blight and vacant building um is certainly front and center for us as well. This kind of evolves into, hopefully, we get to it but at the end of the evening. But staffing discussions with code enforcement, uh official, and what could that look like? Um in partnership with downtown and D M B and really um. You know, exploring that, uh you know, using every tool in our toolbox from either cure or stick method. To wake people up that uh just leaving downtown buildings vacant is not acceptable. Um so how do we, how do we do that in a way that uh um, you know, promotes redevelopment? Um is a, is a key, key point going forward.
I disagree with using a uh a carrot on this. I think this, otherwise, we're going to have to give a carrot to every business that is functioning downtown. Is going to work every day and is hiring people and is making it work. I don't think it's fair then for us to give a carrot to somebody who has a vacant building and is just waiting for what? Carrots, free carrots. And I I just am against free carrots for somebody like that. I I believe it should be a a stick.
I'm an old mom. I support the stick.
You know, I I I, there's some carrots that I think. Just I I've had the idea before of of the commercial condo and some incentives that could help our private or. Our business owners if they could actually own their own building. So I, you know, I don't want, I wouldn't want to necessarily just throw out that, but looking into some carrot options and you know, what's out there. But I would generally agree that, you know, stick might be uh what's called for.
Um can I mention something? Maybe there could be something like a ratio, like if you own more. Um, can I mention something, maybe there could be something like a ratio, like if you own more than four buildings, maybe there has to be a vacancy of like. Seventy five percent or something that disincentivizes. Because my my question previously was, is there some kind of tax incentive that they're re that they're receiving that kind of. Inadvertently incentivizes them from not having to or not feeling the pressure to.
Yeah, to rent those buildings or businesses. Sorry, you wanna take a loss on some to kind of offset your taxable liability on your profitable businesses. But usually the IRS only lets you go like five years, five years at a loss, but I think they've kind of. They're behind the eight ball as well, but yeah, so usually when you have a bunch of businesses, you wanna. Be a failure and not be a failure in some. For tax purposes.
And and that being said, uh, there was, I had a concern specifically. I mean, we're basically talking about two developers in our community, we all know who we're talking about. Um, and one of the developers in particular has like six irons in the fighter right now, and nothing's coming to fruition. There's been demolition, there's been incentives, we've leveraged Oprah funding for some rehabilitation of second floor properties and that. That has a certain timeline, of course, and obviously that person's not within. The limits of the timeline, but there has to be some kind of. Acknowledgement or understanding that like if you have seven projects going on and you're great at acquisition. And you're great at the pre-development costs, but where's the real money for the development, and is that something real and tangible, or is this smoke and mirrors, I mean. I have a lot of questions about how we can. Um, just acknowledge the fact that once you have five or six properties, there has to be some kind of movement in the direction of finishing. And having some kind of closure or. Seeing it through to fruition with a timeline, I guess is what I'm saying.
I know I sound like a broken record on this, apologies in advance, but to me. While policy is boring, this is the importance of policy. And really spending some time on digging down on policy. So that there is an established structure and framework when we're saying yes for no. And also to ensure execution to the extent humanly possible.
I'm a big proponent of sunset clauses. If you didn't get it done in time, on the time that was agreed upon. If if you lose your permit to do whatever you're doing, it's a stop, stop work order. And you go back to, you could go back and refill up the forms with the city, I I think it's too easy to just. Say we're gonna, he's gonna, this person's gonna do something, and then where are we at? Sitting there waiting.
Yeah, it's like you're held hostage.
Okay. We'll move on. Sustainability, this is a obviously a big one that shows up in the plan, takes up a good chunk of our plan. How the objectives was, this is another one, we can kind of scratch off our list, we have achieved gold certifications through M M L's. Uh, Green Community Challenge Program, we have achieved that. Um, so kudos to everyone involved with that. Looking at solar on other uh city-owned properties. Um, including the fire station and other city locations, certainly something that we can certainly. Continue to explore. Um, the viability of that, um, and then looking into. Continuing all the public-private partnerships for really looking at the large scale, that's, I think that's really where you, we need to be focusing energy, I mean. Things on individual properties is great, and certainly something that we need to explore, but to get the really the bank for the. Return on our investment, I think, is looking at those large-scale uh solar farms or arrays, if you will. And how we, how can we partner with our surrounding partners, um jurisdictions on on doing that, I know. I sat in on a discussion with Mike's group um. Uh, down in Charlevoix last month, and so they're they're constantly looking at for opportunities to. Um, promote this type of green infrastructure, um, so we'll, we have good partners. And we'll continue to explore these opportunities um as we move forward. But I'll just kind of leave it at that for now, anything else that we wanna hit on sustainability, obviously, that it's a big item and there's a lot to that, and I. I I'll just be honest with you, um, I get a little overwhelmed in this section and. Not that I don't support any any green initiatives, cuz I certainly do, but there's there's a, there's a lot here. And. And that, it's just one of those. If we could narrow things down or get further direction to kind of um. Kind of clear our focus a little bit, I think that would be helpful for for me and staff um. We're kind of in one of those um difficult time periods where. We still have significant supply chain issues, um, costs are. Um, inflation is is out of control and and I'm a little concerned. Jumping to, you know, I didn't, I know what the goal is, I I the twenty thirty five uh is certainly. Staring us in the face and we'll be here before we know it, and we certainly need to continue to to attack that. But. I will just say, we have a hard time getting. Materials as it is on any of our projects, and I know solar and other things are in the same category. Um, so we may be, this may be a little bit more of a challenging. Uh, action item, you know, as we look at the big picture, but are there others smaller day-to-day things that. We can be doing that um. And I'm looking at uh at Lindsay a little bit on like recycling and those type of initiatives that, do we need to kind of expand what we're doing? Or build on some of the things that we're trying to do in in our community, cuz I think we've. We've done a nice job with with that aspect of it, um, is that something we need to continue to? Kind of promote and expand. Um, that partnership uh further. Um, or, you know, any and other, all other opportunities, we're obviously looking into. In this budget and and twenty three, we do have a electric vehicle that we um have in the motor pool. Um, that we're gonna try to use as one of our pool vehicles, um. And just look at, you know, one of the things we we think about in the motor pool is. It's two ways to think about it, you drive a vehicle till it's. Till it's falling apart and it starts to nickel and dime you to death, knowing that it's not the. It's not the greatest thing for the environment to drive a vehicle that is twenty years old or so or more. With modern technology and and different uh opportunities to. To look at environmental related issues, um, do we need to look at our motor pool and. You know, go into that mode a little bit more than maybe we have in the past, but. I think you you have to kind of take baby steps, if you will, and look at any and all opportunities, but certainly this is a an action item that. I would love feedback on at some point, if it's tonight or ongoing, but. It's certainly something that I know is very important to to council and to this region, because I hear this a lot. And I I think we've, we've done a nice job in this, getting that gold status is a pretty big deal, and maintaining that will be big going forward.
Too bad there's no like funding that comes along with the. If you're platinum, you get. When I look at goal number seven and I and um in goal five, page uh item number seven, I think about. All the things that the city's doing like basically on a daily basis, so it's Solonis refurbishing, that's gonna be native planting, using compost. Mike's always doing melon fill and recycling the asphalt cuz it's valuable, like. There are things that happen on a daily basis that you could, you could honestly quantify, and it would get you. Like checking off some boxes here. Um, but I agree, this is a, it is one of the loftier goals, I feel like, and. And it's hard to provide those like those deliverables or those tangibles, but um. I don't know, in terms of feedback, I think that this is something that's kind of ongoing and. And maybe we can cross off some of these and work through that, through that list. But obviously, it's a, it's a probably a bigger conversation as well, and I don't know if that could be involved in like a budgetary discussion from year to year as well.
Yeah, it was, it was nice to see, I was talking with with Mike and Sarah and a few others today, when we look at. The number of participants in our volunteer uh green pricing program. Uh, Sarah, can you go to the next slide, I think it has it on that slide? So in twenty twenty one, we had a hundred and eighty three participants. And so in twenty twenty two, we currently have two hundred and twenty uh participants, so um. It's certainly trending in the right direction, and when you look at. I guess the skeptics can skeptics can say, well, you're a community of six thousand people, and you have two hundred and twenty people that are. Participating in this. You know, it's two hundred and twenty people that are valuing that, there's probably more out there doing it, obviously, that just aren't. Are aren't members of the. Uh, pricing program for sure, but uh maybe it's something that we can continue to push out through our. Social media channels and and uh anytime we have some sort of a city event, you know, have a. Have a table set up that promotes this program and um. And just brings brings it to the forefront a little bit more than maybe we have in the past, but I was, I was happy to see the number going up and.
I'm surprised by that, cuz I just assumed that with um economic insecurity, that maybe people would be looking for ways to save money and. And not be part of the volunteering mobile energy program, but really, it's. It's such a small, like if you're a hundred percent, it's only like ten percent of your electrical budget increase on a monthly basis, I think that's the average, so. I'm 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 pleasantly surprised to see that there was some growth, that's actually a a really good thing.
Mm-hmm, and Liz even, you know, like you said, you you thought maybe people would drop out of that, you you know, with the. Budgetary concerns and everything, and some people have gone, they've switched from a hundred to, you know, the twenty five or a hundred to fifty. But they haven't dropped, which is, which is kind of encouraging when you see that. I'm a big fan of this program, because I think it is a deliverable. And I think it engages the community, which I think is really, really good. And this is something I think we could really focus on, the messaging is great, it's targeted. Um, I just think working on this might be something that we could show some real progress.
I also hope that we look at uh sharing a solar project. Alright, with other communities, county, township, cities. Is I think the only way we're really going to hit that twenty thirty five. Is with a massive solar. And not and not our city dump, that's not gonna work. That's one, it could cost us one and a half times what we we are paying now for 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 the electricity. Roughly is what it was estimated, so I don't think that's the way to go, but I think we need to look at. Now, before the development of land gets eaten up by more housing and more development. Just to get a solar project someplace in in our area of south uh with another community or county or s- or s.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, now I would only add that I think the good news here is that we are part of Michigan Public Power Agency, and. Believe me, um, if we had the staff. Um, in this city hall building, folks that could handle our power supply. We wouldn't be able to do it. And the agency is constantly looking with its twenty two members for those sites. For those projects, and believe me, they're out there looking aggressively. Part of the bad news right now, as Shane had mentioned. There is supply chain shortages, there's panel shortages, there's international issues with panels. Where they're being manufactured. They're trying to get the projects that we've already subscribed to in the queue. And they are confident or optimistic, I will say, that things will come forward, but it's challenging right now. And. Time is on our side, in my opinion, for technology as it changes with storage. With, you know, other. Um, resources that may surface, but there's also efficiencies that are out there. And my only other comment, and there's a lot of things on this list. But there isn't a day that uh whoever's working in city hall, ordering equipment, ordering materials. Isn't thinking about the efficiencies, because that's the only thing we're gonna be able to purchase anyway. I mean, it's not, let's go to LEDs, you are buying an LED. And time is on our side with vehicles, I think technology is picking up, production's picking up, you're seeing things start to happen. Where they will be available to us versus hearing horror stories from three municipals in the state that purchased E Vs. And they're having problems. Not a lot, but it's not just like there's, you know, E Vs out there, dime a dozen. It's no different than the E V charging stations, they're out there, but they have challenges, believe me, we're going through it as we speak. Um, but again, on a day-to-day operations at the public works, at the parks and rec. Kendall's looking at battery mowers and asking, hey, can we go down and get this, we go down and find out what they do in a day with a mower? What are we gonna do on the downtime? There are ways to do it, and we're looking constantly. And I just want to let everybody know that, that if if we don't. We're not trying to avoid it, because I don't think we can. So some of these. Probably could be cleaned up, I mean, the agency for sure is, it's got our bags on the twenty thirty five. But there are, if you recall in that resolution, there are off-ramps. If 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 it, if we can't do it, we can't do it, we 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 couldn't sit back five years ago and say, we have to do this. If you can't, you can't, if we can, we can. I will tell you that our our goal for twenty twenty five was thirty percent. If all of the projects um are built on schedule, which are gonna be pushed out a little bit, we'll be at thirty four percent by twenty thirty. Four percent over what the goal is.
I'm sorry, thirty four percent by twenty thirty if.
If everything for for what M P P A has subscribed to, so. Twenty two members, um, you know, the Hollands, the Lansings, the Grand Havens, the Zealands. Those are big players in the energy markets that we can. Get these utility scale projects off the ground and grab fifty megawatts, a hundred megawatts. Um, as the mayor had stated, a landfill project, maybe someday, but the technology isn't here yet. As we stated, um, it just, if we're gonna try to do what we have to do, we're gonna have to go large scale. At this point, but the agency's looking at all that for us. So.
And the amount of like federal and state funds available for our green infrastructure, including this kind of utility scale development and. And it even the decentralized stuff, you know, I've always said it needs to be like in all the above strategy where you're. You're focusing on the homeowner and the business owner, but then you're talking about regional partnerships, and then you're talking about. Large utility scale, and that's where economic development and and potential funds to help. Assist in that is readily available from all appearances, so.
Yeah, and just one other quick topic is the um. Clean energy program or the energy optimization program that we currently have in the city. But we're going to be talking about that, about renewing that. And that's really getting into. You know, efficiencies of not using energy. Which is reducing, which is not going out and building. It's getting folks to, you know, get excited about incentives that we do have, which we can expand upon those incentives. If we continue the program, and that's what, you know, the staff is gonna recommend is that we continue that. And and M P P A again is handling that program for us, along with forty other municipals in the state. Not everybody's subscribing, but majority are, I don't have the final number, but um that is. Out as good as it gets, in my opinion, we're trying to reduce energy usage, not build to support. Um, so that will be coming forth at some point, which I would expect, you know, we'll have that discussion. A week from now.
I that, I feel like this section could be shortened. With a with an emphasis on. Quantifying, you know, quantifiable metrics. Like having, going up here, having more people on that plan. Reducing something like, you know, something we can measure, but then I wonder if out of our master plan and out of the action plan, if there isn't um. I don't think we have it, but like a sustainability page on our website, that's. It's our beliefs, it's our guidelines, it's the things we do every day, and that we're gonna continue to do to improve the. The environment, and that's just there, it's not, it's not something we have to go measure all the time.
Yeah, it could just be a statement that in all that we do, we strive to reduce, recycle, sustain. You know, a broad statement like that, that it's embedded in all, all activities.
I'm I'm really thankful for all that we do and and uh agree that this can be shortened, I think we do some, we do great stuff, you know, what I. I have something that I wanna propose that, I think there might be some pushback against, a little bit, a little bit of rub there, i- in in the twenty thirty five goal. I'm curious about having a a getting the public more involved and having a commission, that's a sustainability commission that helps outline the plan, I know M P P A's. Help is gonna lead us through that. But I I I think that I I've been hearing from some of my residents that. In world two, that they they'd love to see like a a plan, a strategy for how to get to twenty thirty-five. And so whether that's uh you know, involvement of a a citizen commission that helps uh do that, helps uh have input. Uh then it can help communicate and and, you know, steer the community. Um, it's it's a, you know, in the master plan, we talk about citizen engagement and we talk about there's a one, there's. Um. It it talks about boards and commissions, and I think this sustainability is is one avenue, which. Clearly, with the long, long of your list, it's it's important to our community, so getting that community involved in that commission level. Um, opportunity. That that that's that's what I would be interested in talking and and considering. I understand that there is uh. There's probably very good pushback for, you know, the the efficiency of how we do things already. That, so I understand that, but I I won't throw that out there. Um, so the committee, the commission, and then the net metering policy. I would like to, I have some suggested improvements I'd like to uh bring to this body about net metering to. Facilitate more community solar projects. Um, and so I, you know, she and I, I want me to present that to you at some point to prove that in the mayor to then send sure around council for future discussion. Uh, then uh this is. We focus on the solar and energy, but the green stormwater infrastructure, that tip of the mitt is is um. Yeah, they're having a campaign now and we're doing great work in a lot of our development projects, but you know, maybe assessing. Um, where we're at with the the GSI, the green stormwater infrastructure. And and yay for the voluntary green pricing program, that's uh uh it's a. I think two hundred and twenty, I'm really interested in comparing that to Traverse City. Uh, I know when we're at one eighty-three, we were beating Traverse City, which had a higher population, so. It it may seem like a small number, but I I think that speaks a lot to our community. Okay, we'll keep moving.
Keep going. Yep. Let's move on to uh another big topic in there in our plan workforce uh. Workforce or affordable housing initiatives. Uh, obviously, this is near and dear to a lot of us. As we've been, as you all have been working on it for a number of years. Um, I certainly appreciate and value the partnership that uh we've been able to grow and expand with our partner. With Housing North, I think going forward, that will remain a a a really strong partnership um. Uh, I've enjoyed getting to know that uh organization and and partnering with them on. On different projects and I I know, just like in economic development, these things take, uh, there's a process involved. So unfortunately, they just don't happen, things don't happen overnight. Uh, there's a lot of. Variables uh with these affordable um type housing initiatives. Um, there's, as a developer, they have to know that they can get. Um, you know, a return on their investment and that that involves obviously incentives and and putting everything together in one. Package and then running the the calc's and making sure that they can get that return that they feel they need, which. If we're in that position, we would want that same type of uh opportunity as a developer um. So, looking at any and all, you know, donating, you know, city-owned parcels, we're we're talking about doing some of that. And and trying to kind of, there's no sense for us to hang on to properties that we are not using or. Having no long-term plans for, so looking at any and all opportunities to kind of turn those properties over. We've talked about ADUs, um, we've kind of crossed that one off, uh, looking at um that as a tool in our toolkit, if you will. To really look at neighborhoods and 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 zoning districts to provide that sort of uh additional opportunity. Um. Looking at densities in certain housing districts, I know Zach is exploring, you know, um. Height limitations in um, I'm trying to think what zoning district that is. Brian, do you recall? Um. Yeah, yeah. So looking into i- if if we, and there's nothing. We have have had a lot of folks call since the news article went out. There's nothing. There's nothing that's pushing this discussion. We just know that if if we're only limited to two stories uh from a hotel standpoint in that area. If you're a a developer of a hotel, it's probably, that's probably dead on arrival. Um, so. I know visibility is everything. I certainly value and support that as well, but. If that if that district is designed for hotels and is it's appropriate for hotels, you really can't make it go with two. Two stories. And it used to be four at one time. They reduced it to um what it is currently. Um, so that's just a discussion item. There's nothing that's. Moving that or pushing that. We we just wanna kind of get further discussion on it. Um, but I think those those conversations remain something that we need to continue to look at um. Um, and then obviously, we're always looking at using all of our incentive tools that we can. Um, to try to support our projects that we've already talked about, the the lofts and. The the neat thing about that project from my standpoint, obviously, is affordability of housing, but also continuing on with. Uh, the greenway, uh, seeing what that could look like as we expand that further and further. Into that uh district is really exciting uh to think about and to visualize what that looks like. So that's that's an exciting project.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, so it feels like you could probably check off a lot of these ones under number two. Um, and really, we could go back to what the original recommendations were from Housing North. So we've done the ADUs, we cross that off our list. Really, it comes down to like density and rezoning of neighborhoods. And we, I don't even think that that we've really approached that conversation, cause. The amount of time and how laborious this effort and this phase was um. Took the planning commission a really long time, which is fine, because that that's the process. It was done well and. It was evaluated over, you know, the course of almost eighteen months. Um, so it would seem like how we could start on that next checklist or like what are those next low-hanging fruits? That would incentivize. So density, I think, was one of the conversations and then, um, you know. There's a lot of debate about there about what zoning is intended to do and who is zoning meant to keep out? And who is zoning meant to keep in? And like, kind of like the historical overview and like how that plays out till today. I mean, those are real conversations and. Real things in in um in um. In the kind of the planning and zoning world in terms of creating equity and and things being equitable. I would, I would, I think I could probably go back to like that checklist that we originally. Were given from Housing North of like, here are your next low-hanging fruits and go for it, City of Taski, so.
Yep.
I don't know if that would be helpful to kind of revisit some of those things. And then obviously, it needs to go through the planning commission and back and forth between. City Council and.
I will say that um the partnership with Housing North um. I I need to get back in front of you. Uh, I think we made a commitment of a two-year commitment uh twenty-one and twenty-two. So I I have talked with them about what that looks like going forward. We have put some resources in the budget to continue that. But I wanna make sure that we get that in front of you for consideration um. Probably put five thousand um in there. That continues the commitment that we've made the last two years.
Yeah, will they still be funded the same way, like the women's organization and resort township and Bear Creek and? City of Taski, I think we're all contributors to the to the salary of.
I will say similar to um.
An LEA.
To an LEA, they they have asked for additional resources. And obviously, that's up to you as as we, you have the budget in front of you, what that looks like, but uh. Um, I will say between Zach and I, we spend a considerable amount of time with with that organization. Um, and we've, I have found it very valuable in my three months that I've been here so far. So I I'm excited about what that partnership could look like going forward.
That's really good to hear.
One of the equity concerns that I have that I think is kind of existing in visible form in our midst is the condition of some rental properties. Um, I have been getting anecdotal reports about incredibly high rents. And conditions where people are sharing bathrooms with other people they don't know, et cetera. So I think that's a substantial concern. Um, affordable housing should also be. As optimal as possible for human beings. And so I'm really interested in code enforcement and expanding, not just looking and I'm not. Totally familiar with what's we're doing right now. I know we're looking at the outside of buildings and grass and that sort of thing. Uh, but I'm really interested to put some system in place to make sure that where people are living. Um, is safe for them to be there.
Do we uh?
Yeah.
Public sector director, do we currently follow up on all reports uh of concerns for? Apartments inside, is there, do you use the I uh International Property Maintenance Code? Do you look at anything inside of the building?
We do if the renter or tenants gives us the authorization to go within. Oftentimes. For lack of a better term, they're almost a victim to the landlord and they're apprehensive for. Uh, repercussions for complaining.
Okay.
So, to the best of our ability, we do address all those situations, but the city for long-term rental has no. Monitoring system.
And it's not a complaint-based only, correct?
That is correct.
There is not an annual, biannual inspection of of apartments or rental units or houses.
Correct, long-term rentals, that does not exist.
Yep.
Okay. I will say in in previous stop, actually, the community I grew up in, we did. Did form a rental inspection and certification program. You know, it was not. It was not without controversy for sure. We had a full room of of landlords that were concerned about us getting into their. Pocketbooks, if you will. Um, but we got tired of. The same landlords turning properties around that were really substandard. And I certainly would not want to live in in them and. It was, it was sad to see in some cases what folks were exposed to. And so we went through a process and. It's on a three-year cycle. We went through and every rental is inspected on a three-year rotation. Um, and it's mostly life safety inspections, you know, it it we can't get into all of the. The the details that a a traditional home inspection would get when you go through a real estate transaction um. But looking at, you know, again, life safety issues um. Making sure that no one is exposed to something that puts them or their family in in harm's way.
Uh, I think, Mr. Moore, I support what you're saying there wholeheartedly and and would support the. Code enforcement position um strongly if that was one of the maybe the primary or main focus of their position.
I I concur.
There you go, you got the votes. Just saying.
Okay, let's move on to our last uh go. I certainly appreciate you sticking with it here. So regional transportation, um, this is kind of a, again, more of a. Not just a city of Pataki issue, but how can we partner with other providers and and really make something um. And fill up, fill a gap, fill a need that we have in our region. Um, it's not solely a city of Pataki issue, it's it's uh, it's folks in surrounding communities as well and.
The high, like the example of an intergovernmental partnerships, because you are bringing all those entities together.
Yep, yep. So I think this this obviously requires, you know, further collaboration of our partners and uh. And neighbors in in Emmett County. Um, and so. I certainly entertain any and all opportunities to to have further discussions on this and what this could potentially evolve into. But I think we've got a fair amount of work to do here. Um, you know, as we all explore. Um, this concept and and make sure that we're all kind of doing our fair share, if you will, and no one feels like they have to make that heavy lift. And um, kind of do it all. Because I I I also think we need to be aware, we don't wanna duplicate uh what each other are trying to do as well. If we wanna. We wanna be very aware of our resources or our tax dollars that are coming in both at the county and the city level. And make sure that we're good caretakers of those resources. So anyways, any opportunities that we can partner and collaborate, we obviously need to look into that.
I think we just need to see what happens with the election too. I think that's gonna be a big indicator of how. A future Emmett County Board of Commissioners will will proceed forward with this.
Come on, and on that one, I know it's super controversial right now. We we wrote a letter of support on behalf of council. For a group at event studies and they were going to the county.
Yeah, the the group, the acronym for the group is.
Uh, how, and and one of the things that's come out of it is what looks like an independent organization not reporting to the county. Who could potentially uh raise tax dollars and the number of things without any reporting to the voters, so. So I think that, I'm hearing that's a major issue and it sounds like a major issue to me.
Like an authority would be, oh.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I mean, in a, in a way like Housing North, they don't report to a government entity. And I trust what Housing North is doing. They're not doing. That. They don't have control of tax dollars.
Well, it'd be all up to the vote, though. It's not like they're gonna raise a tax. It would have to go to a vote. That that the presentation of that was, so we can be, so it's clear, they would have the authority to. Uh, propose a millage that would have to go to a vote. It it would, nothing would be forced upon the people about a vote.
Well, that's a good car- clarification, because it's really important.
Yeah. Okay, next couple of slides, we'll go quick through. Um, these are, we kind of already asked these questions during our downtown. Discussion. I think we've got some feedback. We can go back to uh to our current developer with um. Go ahead and go to the next one. Um. This this kind of finishes our conversation. We talked about code enforcement. I think I've heard enough positive feedback that that's a direction we want to. To go. Um, we we have put those resources in uh the twenty-three budget, so you all will have an opportunity to take an official position on the. On the budget, obviously, that'll incorporate that position as well as uh an SRO, School Resource Officer um. Director Breed has worked closely with the school and uh we believe we've got a a fifty percent uh. Partnership that we can move forward with, uh, a full-time SRO at the facility, at the high school. Um, so that's another um position that we have in FY twenty-three um.
Excuse me, can I just interrupt for a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
It'll be important for me to know on that one exactly. You know, what the high schools' needs are and what exactly they're looking for from us. Historically, going back, and this has been a while when I was on the school board. Um, there were kind of mixed reviews with the use of school resource officers. I'm not saying it's not needed. I'm just gonna be real interested in what it is they're looking for um in terms of the use of that officer, so. Hopefully, that's some information I can get. Thank you.
Related to that, this is um when we were down in Kalamazoo raising our kids. We've got a public safety officer in our high school as well as drug dogs on a regular basis. Is that something we have or have looked at? Parents ended up funding it down there.
Specifically the dog or the?
The the dogs.
That's a school option. Um. They have committed to that previously through the private sector. Um. They have also done it intermittently with the state police, but the state police has kind of backed away from that. I believe liability big the issue. They don't seem to be quite as comfortable at the school right now as far as dogs are concerned. I I did broach that uh within the last couple of months. And there seemed to be some hesitancy.
Okay, we had a great experience with it, but.
Yeah, they've been successful.
Yeah, most of my questions also with, I'd love to know, so the school puts in fifty percent. City taxpayers are asked to do their fifty percent, but the school is has a lot of township residents as well. So that doesn't seem fair to me. Um, I don't know if that's something that's. Uh, I I understand, but I just thought that's a question.
When we have our physical football, basketball, sports games. We have an officer there because of the number of people in the group. Is that correct?
That is correct, and we have an agreement with the school that if we don't have staff adequate to cover that event, the school will pay the overtime. So sometimes it's not us, and sometimes it's on the school.
But when you look at it, there's over a thousand people in that building. Hundred and eighty, two hundred days a year. I don't think that when we have sports games like football and basketball, we don't ask kids where are you from. Knowing that a lot of them are from out from out of district of Petoskey that go to school here. We don't ask them, uh the townships to help pay for an officer to. Attend the football or basketball and stuff like that, I I just think when we, we are responsible. The number one responsibility of city council and of staff is public safety. And I just feel it is so important for us, if we can, if we can stop one incident. We've been very, very successful. If it can be stopped, even though people don't do it because they realize there's an officer there. And we may not be able to count and say, ah, that happened because of that officer there, I just think it's important. But I think it's important, I know from the past talking to Gamble, the principal, she, the officer did more than just. Be there, he was building relationships with people that are in our community that are gonna live here. People that are gonna drive here, if there's that ability to ask a question, I know he got a lot of questions then did. And I think it's important for people to see a better angle than just a policeman riding around in a car stopping, stopping cars. I think it's important for us to have him up one up there, so I think the fifty percent, I I'm all in favor of.
That's why I have an interest in clarity of role.
Oh, yeah, oh, I couldn't agree more, we need clarity of role, but I think. There's a lot that could be done with that process.
And the surrounding townships and municipalities, they pay through millages for the school budget. You know, that's part of their, what they pay out of their tax, from their taxes. It goes to the school, and so that could be considered like part of the the agreement or the partnership is like. Inadvertently, they're paying for fifty percent of 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 um of a public safety officer to be there.
Would the taxpayers be doubled then because we are.
That we would be double, we're gonna, we will do this if we do the NLEA. We are already paying, tax dollars are already paying. All of us at the city for NLEA already through the county taxation process.
Oh, double dipping.
Well, I talked about that before, but it's what, as long as we have them report back to us of what the benefit was for that year. This is what happened due to you being involved with this. I I just, we do want to report, I think we would want to report as Mr. Moore said, we'd want to report back on what. How was the officer, how was that program after a year, was it successful, what what are changes needed? Are we giving a good penny per buck?
Yeah, and I want proactive clarity too on what the expectations are for the role, I think that's really important.
I think that would be, that's something that could be drafted quite quickly, right, the school and the department are. Have already ironed out those details and we're in agreement. So I I see no issue with providing that.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is something that's really being driven by the school, it's not, we certainly don't want to be somewhere that we're not welcome. That they're actually asking for this, so this is being driven by them, but.
I think the court enforcement officer should be full time versus part time.
I agree, especially if we're gonna try to get at these rental issues we discussed.
Let's do long term rental works rotated through on a two or three year basis. Let's include that as a part of when when. Shane draws up the the contractor, the the uh operation of that individual, let's make sure we put in. You know, long term rentals, uh other areas of that are um. You should travel on time, I can't believe how many houses, people are so lazy, they pay three sides of their house. And leave one house there, and you can drive around and you'll see five or six of them at least. Easily, I think that's not fair to the neighbors sitting on that side. If you've paid it all four of yours, you should, and so I think that quarter, and that just takes reminders, I don't think we have to issue tickets and. Use a kid, a stick there, but I I know that you guys have done a great job of not going in and handling people with 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 violation. But working with them to uh alleviate the situation.
Compliance is what we're after.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I I was a fan, knowing what you reported on public safety, starting quantify things a couple of years ago, I was a fan of this being part time. When you reported Shane on this, on the rental piece you've done in other places, we have that. It's definitely a full time position.
Okay, great, then uh. The partnerships that we talked about, I did put it at the higher levels, uh um just going forward. Few of these, uh like an L E A, we've had a a long partnership that kind of lapsed a little bit, uh and so that's. That's the ask, obviously, we'll we'll take your direction on how you would like to proceed at whatever funding level you would want. But the other thing that, and I'll, Mayor, if you want to brief uh folks, I know you've talked about your community arts program and. Um that initiative, but uh we're gonna need some funds in that to to get started, the hope would be that we can kind of. Reduce that number and get get private uh folks to to step up and and partner with us to really build a. Um visual arts uh as we drive around this the community that we can all. Enjoy and appreciate and as long along with the beautiful vistas that we have, uh in incorporate that as well, but. That's uh uh Mayor, if you want to hit on that at all.
See money to get it going so that people, other places such as the community foundation. I I talked to him and I said, so we put some money in, will that go a long ways to. You realizing how serious we are about community art and uh. There are so many, if if you've visited any cities in Michigan lately or in the Midwest, you'll see that every city, whether it be. Munich, the Sioux, Flint. They're all doing this in their communities and it is making a big difference in the the visual uh. Positivity of of the of the community, we've got so many places where we could work with this on, I'm suggesting, you know, that. Right now, we've had one meeting. Most of them are the staff, but we would identify then a select, an arts commit selection committee. That would be of artists, that would be of people from the community that would help select what kind of art are we putting there. It would then go back, of course, to the top, to the Arts Commission. To make sure that it was uh appropriate for our communities, because we did not want to be caught with uh.
Don't do it.
So that's what we have forty thousand comes in. I know it's a lot of money. But if we're gonna leverage money to get anything, the Hemingway statue right down there was seventy, seventy three thousand dollars.
Worth every penny.
That was worth, that was five years ago. While we don't want to do bronze, everything bronze, but this, the cost of it is going up. There's a lot of ways to go, whether temporary or whether it be in. Community parks where we can have a walking tour where you can support people riding bikes and walking. Uh the college is interested in working with us to tie into their art. Um maybe it's uh, there's a lot of ways to go. Uh Shane was involved with some in the past. And I I think we we need to flush it all out on what direction do we go. But I think we need to make sure that the council is supporting and the city is supporting at this process.
There's a grant round open right now with Petoskey Harbor Springs Community Foundation, so.
And M M L has those grants, those micro grants, there's like five hundred and then five thousand dollar grants. And working with somebody like Cricket Tree Art Center as your partner is really important because they're super well endowed.
Two of the individuals currently, Ed Boyer was appointed by uh. Megan, uh and they are both a part of that group right now.
He's a great recycler.
I just think this is a, I I if you want, you look at our community, what do we not have that other communities have? Other than good public transportation, rental inspections, other than that. We don't have, we don't have uh public art anyplace, really. So there we are.
And the last thing I had on there is just, I'm going, I'm sorry, Brian, real quick, yeah, on the um.
Housing partnership, I don't recall, it seems like we said we're gonna put some money and would like to have some representation, I don't know if we did that. For five thousand, I got a board level or something like that, and I think I think the city's just involved directly with them, but on NLEA. That would be a consideration for me, um the county commissioners, I think have two positions. And then there's some at large positions, Stankley Rich Smith was one of them, they're elected, so we got somebody living in the city representing. He could be representing us too, but I think it would make sense for ten thousand dollars that we we have a voice.
Yeah, they have an outstanding board, um I I saw the list of board members, it's a pretty impressive group.
Yes, it is.
I do want to reiterate my concern about outsourcing this though for consideration. And what what I'm unclear on is just as a hypothetical. If an opportunity presents to Housing North or N L E A. It could could potentially benefit, again, just a hypothetical, Harbor Springs versus Petoskey. How are those decisions problem solved? Where there's a potential conflict of interest for an opportunity that might benefit us, might benefit somewhere else. I mean, to me, that's the value of in source, how in house. Um so that's a question I have, like, how are those opportunities problem solved where there's conflict of interest? Did not mean to choke you.
That's okay, so I I think kind of the answer in my mind is, this is, I think about the Northern Michigan Caucus, which is a group that's. Basically, everything north of Traverse City, every red and blue representative into the U P. Representing us, so we have a voice in Lansing. And and the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which is multiple chambers, representing our region, but then we got. We got Nikki in our chamber, you know, we've got our local voice as well, I think. I see these two as regional groups who are gonna bring us opportunities, and then it's still up to us to fight the battle between us and Harbor Springs. Or Point City or whatever it might be, so there there is still a need to have local help. Full time or otherwise.
I don't see conflict of interest happening when like you have an economic investment in something like you own the business. That's why I see conflict of interest, I don't know, maybe I'm not understanding your reference to what like conflict of interest would mean in this context.
Well, there's a number of people that'll be paying Housing North to assist with their endeavors. So if an opportunity presents, let's say a developer, I'm making this up, of course hypothetically. Comes and says, you know, I'm kind of interested maybe in Petoskey, maybe in Harbor Springs. Then my question is, how Housing North, who do they advocate for? How does that work? Since we're paying them. Well, that was a hypothetical, I don't. Yeah.
I'm not sure.
So that's that's my, my question or my concern. Whereas if the, you know, if it's an in-house person, they're a hundred percent advocating for. Our interests, and again, this is nothing against Housing North or N L A. It's just that we're making an economic investment with a pool of people who have a similar interest.
Right.
And to me, it presents the potential for a conflict of interest, and I don't know how that's resolved by them.
Yeah, I I see a huge value in, and these are not necessarily retainers, but I kind of. See it somewhat like that, where when I need to pick up the phone or Zach needs to pick up the phone or Kendall needs to pick up the phone. For a grant opportunity, they've they've got grant experts at NLEA that we can lean on. They can help us administer the grants, because that's a huge time commitment for us as staff. I see huge value in just in and that administratively. And then, you know, we'll have a portfolio of, these are the, these are our commercial slash industrial. Opportunities, we have a a single cut sheet, these are the ones that they're propping up, they're promoting when they talk to site selectors. When they have folks come into town, they know that these are the sites in the city of Petoskey that we are passionate about, these are the sites that we want to see redeveloped. These are the sites that should be in front of them, now, we may not be able to check off all the boxes that a site site selector is looking for, but. These are the sites that we would like them to market, and I would like, obviously, your your uh input on on. Which projects we want to move forward, and I know that industrial, you know, I came from a community that. No industrial, we did not want industries, we we just wanted office space and and uh tech and those type of. Uh cleaner projects, if you will, we didn't, we weren't interested in industrial park, we didn't have an industrial park. So I don't know what, we haven't really dove into that level of discussion here, but uh. Um certainly, they're going to have a portfolio of of and opportunities of, these are the properties that we would like them to help us. Um uh you know, market and get out in front of people and help us with putting a market plan together for these parcels. And then just the administrative, the grant pieces is huge for us, I think. Okay, the last thing I wanted to hit on real quick, um. I believe these are, these are valuable for me, these are valuable, hopefully for you all, um that you're not. Under the gun to to make any sort of decisions, this is just informational and this has been a information, this has been a great process for me. Um I would like to see us do these on a regular basis, personally, the the community I came from, we had a. Uh it depended, it was either five through your six o'clock start to um a work session ahead of our regular meeting or. Because we're first and third, you could have this, the the second um Monday of the month be a work session potentially. If we had things that we needed to talk about, there could be times that you don't really need to get together and you kind of skip it that month or whatever, but. Anytime we get together, I find value in that, uh and so I I don't want to just take up. Your time and and I know we all have things to do, but if you all find value in 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 having a. A dedicated time that we get together, that's great, if you just want to kind of do it as needed, that's fine as well, but I always. Again, I I want to make sure that we talk about um projects that are near and dear to you and sometimes. Having that discussion outside of a a normal meeting time is valuable, so you all can can provide adequate feedback. Um as needed, so I don't know what your feeling is about going on from here, about regular work sessions or what that could look like. If you want to just think about it, that's fine as well.
I think it would be important for us while we're here.
Yeah, I get, I have learned a valuable lesson about that. When you have people here getting on their calendar, which is trying to.
I say either we go with the, there are five Mondays in April and October. If you don't want to do the tenth because of fall colors are still good, let's do the twenty fourth of October. Which is a Monday.
And then maybe for like twenty twenty three, we could set up something like quarterly.
Skip a month and do it in November.
I'm gonna be gone a lot of October, I I wondered one of the thing, like, when I go through this, maybe it's because I'm the newest person. It just seems really overwhelming, that these are kind of umbrella goals, and one thing I was doing as I went through. For each of them was to try to, you know, distill something, and this is just me, you may all have different ones. It could come to the forefront, like for number one, it was um this whole issue of funding parks and how to do that, and number two. It was the trail system maintenance problems, number three, it was a policy for economic development and affordable housing anyway. Just something that would distill to the top that we could really dig in and focus on, because you were talking too about having. Kind of a list of how, you know, that you could check off boxes, and with this, the way these goals are set up, they're just so huge. Um that if we could kind of distill something in every category to focus on, that might be a way to really. You know, get some action on some focused, so maybe the first thing is trying to distill. If people are interested.
Well, and this is a distillation of this.
I know.
Yeah, this came out of this and and we feel like this is overwhelming, this is way on.
I I I talked to Zach one day and he says, what in the heck, this is a twenty year plan basically. And I think we need to be more. What the heck? This is a twenty year plan, basically, and I think we need to be more realistic about. What is it that we want to accomplish in an action plan? Way too damn much stuff. This actually has supposed to be a year. Let's let's make it, let's take some small bites out of this elephant, not.
They're actually, they're actually two year plans.
I know, but. It it won't be done in ten years.
And I looked at the twenty nineteen one, and I compared the two, and it was very much a similar, but we checked out a lot of boxes, and we did actually check off a lot of boxes here. So I'd be interested to see the refinement of this now, and then. Maybe the next meeting would be like honing in and and a distill of of that even more, like something super tangible.
So are you looking at October or are we looking at November? People are going shooting deer on the day before, thanks, before deer seasons on the fourteenth. That's a Monday, the fourteenth of November. There's no reason for Mad to be here if we're not talking about something involving public safety. There's there's no. You know, you don't wanna be here, do you?
Maybe for the first meeting, it could just be city council members to try to distill the rest. To get started.
Do you wanna be back for uh?
That's just a thought.
The fourteenth of November. You know, another another thing to think about, and this would be something maybe you do in. February and, you know, when you're not skiing or whatever, but. We may, and this would be up to you all, but maybe do another strategic planning session where we. Um either bring in a facilitator and kind of go through this process again. Um, I've gone through processes where. We just bring in whiteboards and you each have, you know, stickies and you can put them on priorities that you believe are important, and then we tally things up. It's a pretty simple process, and then we narrow this down and focus and but. If you think we're good and we just need to make some tweaks, we're good, we're, I'm fine with that too, but I always wanted. That's always an option that we can either bring in somebody, I use Dr. Orin and Dawn and Adrian, you did a wonderful job. Uh but there's others as well.
I feel like for this group, it would be more effective just to meet within ourselves.
I think so.
Our priorities, I mean, you know, it's our beacon, and it is work in progress, and it's not everything in all all things.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
You you can facilitate. I I don't believe we need a facilitator to get done what we're doing.
Sometimes a facilitator can talk a little bit more directly to. Now, you are, you are my bosses, right?
You know, we have just, you have said, I have said things and you've gone, well, what about this? And I think. That is where you come in as far as throwing out another another view of it. The administrative view of it. I I think we can, we'll be fine.
Great, appreciate that.
I invite you to speak directly.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate it.
So that's sort of the topics, we had a list of work session topics, the boiling this down. You know, roll over that first. I I I don't know, I I wonder if. Potentially, potentially it could be a short, maybe maybe we could, I thought this was very productive. And then maybe see what the next version is. Maybe we don't need to spend a lot of time on. Getting this fine tuned, but we've, I guess, some some topics to start.
You know, or or again, because we're we're focused on this and it's not gonna be an agenda item, because I know. Uh I've heard from some of you, like, you you don't, you don't wanna work session to be a dress rehearsal for um meeting. Which I agree with that completely. So in this case, this is not that, so you could do like a six o'clock start. If you think an hour is enough time. Or five thirty ahead of a normal scheduled meeting, so it's not an extra meeting for you. Um, can do it on the twenty first.
I'm good with that. You guys good with that?
I'm gonna try, yeah, I mean, I I know that.
Was that too early? Time wise for you or?
I can make it work. I I can make it work. I think that, you know, we just, we get, we get the agenda, we we'd go through what we can.
I will do it, but I don't love the idea. I think.
Yeah, that's fine. I I wish it was an idea.
No, I think a separate time like this is better. I think by the time we really would go through distilling all this and then into a meeting, I mean. It's a lot.
Overwhelming, yeah.
For me, that's just my perspective.
Okay.
The only meeting I've ever done that I found was the waste of people's time was the last time they never. We did not make any. It was really disappointing and disheartening. That's been my only experience in this context so far, where a special meeting was held. That I didn't feel like we we were very accomplishable.
Okay.
No further business to come before this meeting. We'll keep the fourteen. On the twenty first, you want to do it before the.
It sounded like there.
Yeah.
Things change, and he'll let us know.
What time would you prefer? Is is five thirty too early?
Feed them and they will come. Taking it out of my, taking it out of the mayor's budget line and everything, because I've never taken it to the yard. Six years, I've never taken it to the yard.
Thank you all for your time. I really appreciate it. Great.